Jason Medor, I'm the Solicitor for Human Services Center. Thank you for allowing us to take the time to present this conditional use request to you. The purpose of the conditional use request is to place a Fairweather Lodge, which is essentially an expansion of our Fairweather campus that has already been established on Grant Street in what is more commonly referred to as the old Red Cross House. Fairweather Lodge is undefined in our zoning ordinance because there are components of Human Services that are provided with the Fairweather Lodge residence. I understand we have 50 minutes tonight. I'll try not to get your caucus meeting going too late. But I did want to give a brief background with our Executive Director of Human Services Center, what we're doing with the Fairweather Lodge. I also have our Director of Community Development, Tammy Gibson here, that's going to provide some information regarding the funding of the Fairweather Lodge through grants and also the veterans aspect of it. And then I have Davis Posito that's going to give a quick rundown of the building itself and what the remodeling is going to do and what the expectations are for the interior and exterior structure. So what I'd like to do first is just call Michelle Kelly Thompson, please.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Kelly Thompson. I'm the Executive Director of Human Services Center. I've been with the Human Services Center for 34 years. The last two has been as Executive Director. Prior to that, I was Director of Clinical Services and have been a part of many of our development throughout our organization for treatment services within the community. The Fairweather Lodge model for adults who have serious mental health illnesses is really an exemplary program. It actually was developed back in 1963. And coincidentally, Human Services Center was also started in 1963 after President John Kennedy signed the Mental Health Procedures Act into law in October 1963. The philosophy behind the Fairweather Lodge is that folks live together as a group. They make all group decisions and take on responsibilities. And they're responsible for developing a business model so that they are gainfully employed either within the community or as part of their Fairweather Lodge. Some of our Fairweather Lodge folks run a janitorial service. They actually clean HSC's buildings as part of their participation in their own recovery. It really gives people an opportunity to get support from other members who understand what they're going through because they themselves have mental health histories. Human Services provides a supervisor, the Fairweather Lodge Coordinator, that helps be a resource to those individuals. We currently have five Fairweather Lodges. We participate in the National Organization for Fairweather Lodges that's called the Council of Community Living. And there are different outcomes that are expected through participation in Fairweather Lodge. The number one is to increase the individual's community tenure and ability to participate and contribute to the community. It also helps keep people out of the hospital, out of incarceration. It really is a recovery-oriented program so that they are encouraged to work together and get support from each other while moving forward in their own independence. So sometimes, and we've had many folks that have done this, they have been very successful in coming in, living as part of a Fairweather Lodge group where they've made decisions together. They take turns cooking meals, shopping, all the things. And they become a family. But then, as happens in a lot of families, they get ready to spread their wings and they move on to more independent living and more independent jobs. So the focus is really being responsible and supportive to each other and looking at how they can gain their independence despite having to deal with, many of them, a very long-term mental health problem such as depression, anxiety, schizophrenia. So we are eager to expand our Fairweather Lodge services to also include a veterans component. So this is what the purpose of what we intend to use the Red Cross building for is to expand to a veterans' Fairweather Lodge to help those individuals who may need the support of other veterans to kind of get on their feet and to move forward.
Could you give a brief background of Human Services Center in general? Just in case I'm pretty sure of the three of you.
Sure. Human Services Center is a community mental health center that was developed under the Mental Health Procedures Act. We offer a variety of services for people. I kind of describe it as we serve people from birth to death. We have developmental services for young children, our early intervention services all the way through adolescence and adulthood. Currently, we serve about 4,800 clients actively throughout the community. We have programs that are in the community. We're also offering school-based services. And then, in addition to our residential services, we have outpatient behavioral health services that we provide not only here in Newcastle but also in Allwood City.
How many employees does Human Services Center have?
We currently have 145 full-time employees, 15 part-time employees. And of those employees, 55 are residents of the city of Newcastle.
And the corporate office is also in Newcastle, right?
That is correct.
And you have contracts with Lawrence County and other school districts providing mental health services?
Yes, we're in every school district in Lawrence County.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Kelly Thompson? Garrow?
I just have one question. Is this a coed home or are they just single gender in the Fairweather camps? I never knew that.
It actually can be either/or. Some of them are just guys. But we do have some where we've had men and women sharing the house.
Ms. Fulcher?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Kelly, if you didn't want to stay there, because I'm going to ask Mr. Cameron. Mr. Trower? And you said that there'll secure, as far as security, will there be security at this facility? Because they're sleeping there, right, this all night?
It's their home. It's their home. I mean, we have five other ones. There is staff that are available to them to call, but there isn't anyone. It's not staff 24/7.
Oh, so there's not like a supervisor that you refer to?
There's a coordinator that works with them, that visits all of the houses and helps them engage in whatever things that they're working on for their treatment plan. But they're, yeah, they're independent. And truly, we try to allow them to have, I mean, they're paying rent. This is their home and their community. So it does turn it into more of a family-like.
Okay, so they're not a supervisor distributing medicine or anything like that?
No, they're all responsible. And at a point in their treatment where that's not a concern.
They're self-sufficient? Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Jarrow?
I just have a couple of questions. You said there are five facilities right now?
Yes.
Of Lawrence County?
Yes.
Where are they located?
Three of them are on Grant Street. And then we have two on Crotepe Avenue.
Okay. And will there be any medications onsite that are supposed to be?
No, they're all responsible for their own medications.
Okay. And so what are the total, like, the individuals being treated there, what are the conditions that they're, I guess, are under treatment for?
Some of them have had problems with depression, with anxiety. Some may have bipolar disorder, schizophrenia. Pretty much, those are kind of the main ones.
Are there any, like, violent participants in the?
No, we would, again, this is really for folks that are very high-functioning. They are actively, many of our Fairweather Lodge folks have full-time jobs and work in the community, just like you and I do. And they're carefully screened to make sure that they are at that point in their recovery.
Is there anyone from the public that has any questions from Ms. Thompson? Okay, anyone else?
All right. Thank you. Next, I'm going to call up Tammy Gibson. She's going to explain the funding regarding this particular building.
Hello, everyone. Tammy Gibson from Human Services Center. The funding that we're going to be using for this is for the renovations. I got a fair grant, the realty transfer tax. We had $250,000 grant award that we'll use to renovate the building. For operating, I also got another grant. It's $101,000. It's called Money Follows a Person. It's through OMSAS, which is the Office of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. Got $101,000. We can use that for operating. We're going to buy all furnishings with that money. We pay some of the partial salary of the Fairweather Lodge Coordinator. We can pay the rent for a few months for the residents. Utilities for six months I put in there, architect engineering fees, administration of the grant, that's all covered by that. And for future, for sustainability, there's a lot of programs out there. We meet monthly with, there's a monthly conference call or Zoom, like I should say, with Department of Military Veterans Affairs, OMSAS. DCED is always on the call. There's all kinds of different funding that we will be eligible for. PAV trust fund. They also told us to reach out to American Legion. There's a lot of different places in the future we can actually ask for more money. And they'll start paying rent, too. So that's how we sustain the project. Anybody have any questions regarding the funding?
Um, Garrow? Ms. Fulcher?
None at this time, Ms. Garrow?
No. Tammy, do you remember Mr. Everhart in the Southside Hospital?
Who?
Mr. Everhart. Jason, remember?
Oh, Charles.
Oh, Charles.
Yeah.
And remember, you remember some of his funding courses? Because remember, he was going to do something similar with veterans.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm sure that there's.
Well, I'm waiting to hold my questions. I have a couple of questions I want to ask the Solicitor.
And as far as ever, every, I think once a week, Tim goes out through our Fairweather Lodge Coordinator, trying to recruit people for it. But I mean, I've talked to them. The ultimate goal is to put six veterans in there. But how I structured the application, it'll be priority. First priority is going to be veterans. Second priority will be veteran families and friends. Third priority will be public safety, so.
I recall that you went through the Veterans Administration. You worked with them. And he, they could not enter into an agreement. So, I mean, you may have already looked at this happen.
Yeah, we spoke with them, too.
Yeah, and I knew that they were looking for such a program, so. And these, just to be clear, these Fairweather Lodges, Tammy, they are not contingent upon court-mandated treatment or anything like that, correct? And this has no tie-in with any type of criminal background or, you know, anything required by the courts, correct? And there is a, as part of the screening process that Michelle was talking about, there's a, there's an element involved in requirement to always maintain your level of treatment, correct, in order to maintain housing there?
Yeah.
What about, so you provide rent for a portion of time. What happens if someone can't pay their rent? Do they put out of the project or is there funding for them?
Usually, they pay their rent. Well, we give them leeway if they can't pay. And that's why I wrote into the grant to pay for the first couple of months to get them on their feet. But the whole process, the whole purpose of it is to get them out there in the community, getting a job, being self-sufficient. So that's our job to get them to do that.
Okay. That's our question, I think.
Anybody from the public?
Is anyone from the public?
Now, I'll have Davis Posito come up and just give some backgrounds regarding the building.
Good evening. I've been working with Human Services for a little over a month. And I want to describe to you the campus a little bit. And I think some of you are familiar with it. Right here is the Red Cross building. Across the parking lot, we are sitting over here. There's the other Fairweather Lodges along the former Grant Street that was vacated. There's a grass area here and sufficient parking. And there's another Human Services facility here. So they've established the campus in this area. I have the unique, I guess, position of being one of the neighbors. And my tenure in this space here precedes the Fairweather Lodge developments along Grant. And I can say, having been there before and after, that HSC has been a great neighbor with regard to maintaining their properties. It's been an improvement in the neighborhood from when they were there before. So based on my experience, I would expect, and knowing the plans that they have, that this will be another successful project. In your packets, you'll see a floor plan. This is the first floor. We'll convert this into a common area, living room, so to speak, lounge, conference area, there'll be a communal kitchen, a computer lab or computer space for the residents, a powder room or public toilet on this floor, and then an office for the counselor. So that, those improvements will be made for that floor. The second floor, we're going to develop six bedrooms. So we have four along the north side, two on the south side. There's going to be two toilet rooms with either bath or shower facilities, closets in each room, storage space. The third floor will be the storage space. There's a fire stair in the center of the building and one at the rear. So the building will be code-compliant. This is an exterior rendering looking southwest. We're going to put a new roofing, new windows, new doors. There was a question earlier about security. So we'll upgrade the hardware on the doors. There's going to be some minor structural repairs to some of the brick on the exterior. There's parking behind the building and parking over here to the northern building if the residents have a vehicle. There's ample space to park. These interior renderings indicate how the building, the common space that we furnish. So you get some idea or feel for what are the areas in the building and what the furnishings will be like. And Tammy had mentioned some of the grant funding for furnishings. The HVAC and electrical systems in the building will be upgraded. Interior architectural finishes, paint finishes. The house has a lot going for it in that it has hardwood floors. So those will be maintained. And there'll be some alterations to create the bedrooms. But by and large, the first floor will remain largely structurally the same with some minor improvements. Any questions I can answer?
Um, the house I noticed in the beginning is handicap accessible.
And how, is there a stair lift or some type of way to get up the upstairs if somebody is handicapped?
Currently, there is not in the plans the inclusion of an elevator or a lift.
Ms. Fulcher?
None at this time.
Yeah? No. Trower?
No.
Ms. Stack?
How many parkings, how many parkings spots though are there for the whole campus to know?
I don't know the exact number of them. But you can see in this aerial view, there's probably more than 20. And then there's some more paving back here that is not currently developed as parking, but it could be stripped and be, you know, set aside as parking spaces.
So are there any dedicated spots right now for the Fairweather Lodge?
The rear of the property is paved and then would be reserved for that. It looks to me, just looking at it, you could probably get six to eight vehicles there.
Any questions from the public?
Any other questions, Alton? Yeah, I have Mr. Fulcher has questions for you to turn around.
Yeah. First of all, I like the project, not here to object to the project. But what I, I'm very curious because Mr. Smith brought up a couple of things. The old Universal Rondo building was supposed to be used for veterans. What is going to become of that building? Because it's still owned by Human Services. Is it just going to sit there? And what is the intentions? Because we went through a whole dog and pony show a few years ago. Jason, you were over here and you know, okay? And then we had another gentleman come in for the South Side on veterans. Everybody says they're going to do something for veterans. And I trust Tammy immensely, I really do, with her funding source and that. But, you know, my concerns are, if the funding isn't there, what happens? Human Services has done a great job with your existing homes up there. Mr. Van Dusen, God bless his soul, had walked through that thing and made sure everybody pounded every nail, did everything correctly, okay? And you can see those houses look today as they did when you first remodeled them. So my hat's off to you on that. My biggest concern is, I'm glad you're going to fix up this building, but what about the big building? What is that? Is that been, so there's no veterans going into that? That whole group with Rocky Blyer and that? Did it go south?
Michelle, do you have any information regarding that? You could come back.
I would ask for.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't say that it went south, but it did go unhold. We, the Board of Directors decided to kind of put a pause on it. And then I'm sure you can appreciate that there's a lot involved with getting multiple projects off the ground. And we're still kind of coming out of a pandemic that has also slowed things down. And a lot of it has to do with getting funding and that sort of thing.
Now, as I recall, the funding regarding the, what was to be the Veterans Center at the old Universal Rondo building was extensive. And there was a heavy buying, grant funding buying. A Fairweather Lodge, on the other hand, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Human Service Center is self-sustainable to the point that they can handle all the funding regarding rehabilitation of a Fairweather Lodge. However, the point of bringing Ms. Gibson in and showing that there was grant funding that was provided for this renovation was just to show that the state government recognizes that there is a need for the Fairweather Lodge model. And it's been successful, not just in Lawrence County, but it's been successful across the country. And there is money available for it. This type of money does not sustain, the grant money that you're getting for the Fairweather Lodge at the Red Cross building wouldn't be able to sustain the scope and size of what was originally intended for the Universal Rondo building. So at this point with the Universal Rondo building, what are you doing with it? Are you just maintaining it and hoping for, you know, just expecting some other?
Right. I would say that, you know, at this point, we're continuing to look for how to fit that into the overall campus and projects and certainly further veterans services. But we were able to get the funding to do the Red Cross now. So that's where the focus is.
I don't want to be doom and gloom, but it seems like if you, when you keep coming out with multiple projects, you either finish the first one first and then you move on down the line, okay? We have to look at that building every day, up and down Highland Avenue, okay? The general public has to look at that building. And now, you've got my support for this, but it's hard to explain to the taxpayers. Human Services is going to go over, and we're going to do this project now on Grant Street, but we're just going to keep the Highland Avenue building and that on the back burner. And hopefully, one of these days, it may come to fruition. But it's a blinding building. Would you agree or disagree?
Well, I would say, have we ever received any code enforcement violations regarding that building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I believe that the building itself is code-compliant. There has been no, there have been no violations that have been provided regarding the building. But the building is vacant at this point, but it is still being maintained.
Okay. Good enough. Let's have just a couple of other follow-up questions. I just want to understand a little bit better. So the people that live there, they're in a group? And they stay in that group? Now, do they, if one moves out, does someone else move in? Or is it, do they move as a group?
No, they move in as an individual. But they're interviewed by the other members of the group. And they have to have confidence that that person is going to be a safe individual to live with them and be part of the overall structure of the program. So there are specific rules that each Fairweather Lodge comes up with on what they agree to as kind of a shared governance.
What's the average time that a resident or a, is there an average?
I would say that we've had some folks that have, it truly has become their home and they do best because they need that support of the other group members. And it really is like a family where they choose to stay together. We have other folks that came in and benefited from the program and then was able to move on in different capacities to live, you know, independently. They wanted to have their own apartment, that sort of thing. But they still are part of the Fairweather Lodge model. And they can still come back for group activities with the folks that they lived with.
But the other, for a new one to come in, did the existing residents have to vote or allow them in?
Yes.
If granted, traditional approval, when would you expect remodeling and an opening date for your first tenant or tenants?
I think we would like to move as quickly as possible in terms of being able to move forward with renovations and, yeah.
End of 2022?
Yeah.
Well, probably not the end of 2022, probably more likely the end of 2021.
About that quick?
Yeah, the funding is all in place. Yeah, they.
Yeah, the structure of the building is fine. There needs to be interior renovation.
Do you, like, do you already have a list of potential tenants?
There's always a list of potential tenants for the Fairweather model, so there's already people that have been screened. It's just a matter of are there beds?
Well, maybe the ease, some of my colleagues' concerns are that, is that waiting list without breaching any confidentiality, obviously? Are these tenants, are they veterans?
Again, I believe Tammy referenced this as well, but we, our coordinator of the Fairweather Lodge is a veteran himself, and he is out in a number of, we just had the veteran stand-down where we were there interacting with folks. I don't know the specific parties that they are screening, but they are working towards that because that is the goal. Part of this state funding with the Money Follows a Person is that we're working very closely to help identify folks who would be able to benefit from this model and this program.
Well, do you have a contractor lined up, David, to do this work by the end of 2021? You're taking windows out, you're putting doors in.
Well, contention on council's approval. Once that approval is granted, if it is granted, we will then begin preparing drawings for bidding. So we will probably have construction happen in the next year, 2022. It'll take us a couple of months to put...
That's what I'm getting at. Your solicitor says at the end of 2021, you're saying 2022?
Right, I didn't expect, I apologize. I didn't expect a project to be completed at the end of 2021. I expected construction to begin by the end of 2021.
Because there's a delay on everything.
The plan had been to make this available for winter work, and so we hope to have bidding happen by the end of the year so that we can select a contractor, and then during the winter months, January, February, March, and April, we can work on interior. Once the weather breaks, then it's appropriate to do re-roofing and window replacements. So in the late spring, they should be able to occupy.
Thank you. So is it safe to say that although you're shooting to attract veterans, if that doesn't work, you still, it's still just going to be one of your regular facilities?
Again, we've established a priority of veterans, veterans' families, first responders. Those are the individuals that we are looking to be able to have be part of that, the Veterans Fairweather Lodge program.
Last question I have for Mr. Redore, you probably would have, if anyone had, you might have. The other homes there, they, were they, did they get conditional use approval?
They weren't required back then.
Okay.
There was a resolution that was, that granted the project, but the conditional use approval wasn't required back then. The reason that we're here for a conditional use request is because we believe that this Fairweather Lodge model has been undefined in our city ordinance. It's the reason that it's not considered a group home is because there are contingencies in place regarding residents that requires them to go through the Human Services Mental Health Model. This is also not a halfway home because there is, there's no coordination, and this doesn't involve anything regarding, anything regarding any type of criminal rehabilitation to be through substance abuse or previous incarceration. The Fairweather Lodge model is something that is already here and has been operating. It's, it's, it's nothing more than an expansion of the campus that we already have going, but I felt an abundance of caution to do a conditional use request because it's, you know, it's technically undefined under our city ordinances.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public has any questions after these follow-ups? Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this matter? Do you have any further?
No, I'm sorry that I took up so much of your time, and I appreciate the time, and Council President Smith is going to have to speed-read to get you back on track because there is a pendulum, it's kind of...
You, I believe this is part of the packet, but...
It is, that's a color rendering.
Would you like this to make part of the record?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing that, I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing. More favor?